Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular board meeting for the Milani Malka Lani Valley Neighborhood Board Thirty-Five for February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. At this time, I call the meeting to order. And I ask the presentation of the colors and the pledge of allegiance by Scout BSA Troop Six-Six-Four.
Please rise for the presentation of the colors. Color guard attention, troop attention, color guard forward, march. Color guard, march on, march. Color guard, right wheel, march. Color guard, ready, halt. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance Scout salute. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the development of which it stands. For the nation. Ready to. Color guard, forward, march. Color guard, ready, halt. Ready, halt. Troop dismiss, color guard dismiss, you may be seen.
Okay, thank you very much, Troop Six-Six-Four. Before we get started, just a reminder for everyone, and I will have a reminder at the end of the meeting. Neighborhood Board Thirty-Five will be in recess in March. So we will not have a board meeting in March. So moving on to meeting decorum, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening and welcome, everyone, on behalf of the members here of your Milani Malka Lani Valley Neighborhood Board. Again, I want to just go over the meeting decorum, and it's basically simple. We just please, because we look forward to hearing all your feedback, your ideas, solutions, and for everyone to have a chance to speak, we just ask that if you could please, if you want to speak, raise your hand, be recognized by the chair. The chair will then direct you to come up to the microphone to speak. Those that are joining us virtually, same thing, you could use the icon, raise your hand, the chair again will recognize you and then direct you when to speak. And the last, if possible, to keep it to three minutes as best as you can. Thank you very much, that's the meeting decorum, back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Moving on to our monthly reports from our first responders, Honolulu Fire Department.
Hello, hi, everyone, my name is Chris Kling, and I'm with the Honolulu Fire Department out of the Milani Malka Station right behind us here, and I have the statistics for calls in January of this year. In January, we responded to four activated alarms, fifty-two medical calls, and two motor vehicle crashes. The monthly safety tip is about power outage preparedness. Here are a few ways you and your family can be prepared for a power outage. Prepare your supplies, ensure your flashlights, radios, et cetera, contain batteries that are charged. Don't forget to charge the extra batteries as well. Prepare your family, check in with family members if anyone relies on medical devices requiring power. Ensure that you plan ahead of time. Prepare your food and water, set your refrigerator and freezer to the coldest settings. Keep them closed as much as possible during the outage and fill up water containers for drinking and other needs. Protect your electronics, unplug unnecessary electronics to prevent damage from power surges. Never touch down the power lines, always assume lines are energized and dangerous. And for any more safety tips, you can go to honolulu.gov/EM to learn more about power outages. You can also go to the hawaiinelectric.com site. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, any questions from the board? From the audience, anyone online? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good evening.
You too. I don't see the Honolulu Police Department, are they online? Okay, we'll move on. Water supply was not able to make it tonight. So we'll move on to our military representative, Colonel.
Good evening, Board, Lieutenant Colonel Jared Melander from One-Thirty-Third Engineer Brigade, representing Schofield and US Army Garrison Hawaii. Training for the remainder of January will continue in East Range today through the twentieth, as well as aviation training day to the twentieth, so you're supposed to be in the public. But it's supposedly day only, of course, you know, some may get back a little bit late. Bear with them. Okay, additionally, on Schofield barracks, there will be both day and night artillery and mortar training eighteen, the rest of this week, and then next week. This includes late and evening, or late evening and early hour loud booms. There will also be day and evening demolitions today through the twenty-fourth. Beware. For the National Vietnam Veterans Day Parade, which is the twenty-ninth of March, pays tribute to the cause of freedom and liberty for those that participated in Vietnam. Opening ceremony will begin at four-thirty PM for Gruisi, and the parade will begin at six PM along King Kalakaua Avenue in Waikiki. Marching bands, veterans groups, military units, as well as many community groups from Hawaii and the mainland will be presented. And the next job fair for US Army Garrison Hawaii is in April, on the twenty-second, and that'll be at Aliamani Military Reservation Gym from eight-thirty AM to two PM. Several different jobs and provisional hiring will occur that day offers. If anyone is interested, they can go to www.himwr.com and click on employment. And then, as always, the community concern line is eight oh eight seven eight seven one five two eight. Unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
Hey, thank you, Colonel, any questions for the military this evening?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes. Yeah, Chair, just a question for the job fair. That's for federal civil service positions also, and I guess where that's leading to with the president's cut. I mean, how does that affect this job fair or the jobs that you're recruiting for?
So many of these jobs will be like MWR jobs, so non-appropriate funds. So that, I'm not too sure how many appropriate fund jobs there will be. That doesn't mean people can't still look, right? It's, you just can't hire for some of them.
Okay, thank you, any other questions, anyone online? Thank you, Colonel, appreciate it. Okay, so for board business, I know the school facilities, it is going to be here, they said they're going to be a little late, so I'm going to defer them to later on in the board agenda. And also going to defer item B. Understand that they're still working on it, so they will be at a future board meeting to provide us with an update on that. So we'll move on to item six, which is residents or community concerns. Do we have any residents or community concerns this evening that are not on the agenda?
Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
In Lani Valley, along Wika'ou Street, it appears that the Master Association for Lani Valley, the Community Association, they are now under new management through Huayana, who subcontracted site management to another company. It was brought to my attention, and I went and followed up and saw that there are signs, their announcement signs, like those those plastic A-frame signs, one of which is attached to a tree by a chain at the top of Wika'ou, it before the ridge. And there's two more within the valley that is chained to City and County signage, like a no parking sign or things of that nature. There didn't seem to be a permit, that there would be for that, but I did reach out to the site manager, and the site manager insisted that that's our property and we can do what we want because we take care of it. I tried to explain to him that everybody who has property has to maintain those strips. We're not allowed to plant anything, put anything, et cetera. But he was very adamant, so I disconnected the call and I contacted City. I did get in touch with one person, and she did confirm nobody should have anything there. TPP, I still haven't been able to reach them, however, maybe this is something that Councilmember's Office or Mayor's Office can maybe address, or have the contact information that I received regarding the new site manager, so they can reach out if they need to go forward with that. I just don't want to pay a fine. I needed it, my neighbor, so I'll submit that form, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other community concerns this evening? Okay, so I see we have the Honolulu Police Department, so good evening, would you come on up and give your report?
All right, sorry. I just pulled my thing to go there, I had to go. You guys got questions, just ask, I'm sorry, but I just printed out the stats for you guys. So for your guys' area, we had three hundred seventy-six calls for service for the month of January. As far as all the deaths, we had only one reported of an other death. As far as burglaries, we have, we had two reported burglaries. No unauthorized entry into a motor vehicle. No assaults, no aggravated assaults in your guys' area. Actually, uh, plenty of reports of MVCs, so kind of plenty of MVCs. And that would lead to our principal of the, to make sure everybody drive and respect each other and drive slowly and obey traffic rules and regulations. And just this past week, we actually have a new major that got assigned to our district. He will be probably coming out and then putting a town hall meeting or a meeting to meet the major sometime in the near future. So our new major is Robert Town. Previously at our central receiving division, and is now will be our major. So our acting major Gonzalez is going back to his captain responsibility. So that'll be in the near future, we are already in the process of trying to set dates up for meet the major. So if you guys have any questions, one line, find out his perspective as far as how he plans to run the district. That'll be a great time for you guys to attend and give him any type of questions you guys might have. Isn't that any question? If you guys need more stats, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm on day watch, so I'm not sure what they actually give you guys, but if you guys do need more stats for your guys' area, I can, I have them all on, on the paperwork I've prepared now. You guys want to hear for anything specific?
Any questions, or I think we're good with the stats, any questions for the HPD this evening, anyone online? Do I have a question you can take back? So I know that there's talk about opening up a substation in Milani Town.
Yes, there was, I think, a bill or...
Yeah, they have some kind of thing. So my question is, does that require adding bodies to District Two? Or are you gonna use, utilize the same number of personnel you have and just open up the substation?
If, if we're gonna staff it like a substation where it would be twenty-four-seven, it would be called for increasing our personnel. Right now, we have, for the Milani area, Wahehua and North Shore, we have a total of thirteen officers. So right now, our minimum is, we try to run with ten or eleven officers. So if we're gonna leave an officer there, it would definitely require staff. We don't have an abundance or an overage of officers. So if we do staff that station, it'll probably come from one of the officers that would normally be patrolling your guys' area.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, the only issue we have with that is if we needed to keep it staffed, we would have to have personnel in there, yeah. So it would have to come from somewhere, and unfortunately, we do not have the staffing to do it at this point. We'd probably ask for more staffing, should the F C use that as a staff.
How many people you have staffed at the Wahehua Station?
Um, well, for the whole district, because we all come out of Wahehua Station, and there's four on the North Shore, so from Kaina Point to Crawford's, we only have four officers and one supervisor out there. For Wahehua Station, which includes from Whitmore all the way down to the borders right along the coffee fields and stuff like that, we have another four officers. And then for Milani, we have five officers. So this including Door Milani and over here, and all the way, it also includes Tech Park and Wheeler Air Force, I mean, yeah, Wheeler Air Force.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, moving on to elected officials, the Officer of Governor Green, Mel, are you online?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, Mel, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Chair Hazama and members of the Neighborhood Board. For the Governor's Report, Governor Green recently issued Executive Order Twenty-Five O Two to launch a road bus recruitment initiative called Operation Hire Hawaii. And this is to assist displaced federal workers, federal employees, and other similarly impacted individuals who have the skill sets that the state is looking for, such as environmental protection, public health, and cybersecurity. The goal of the initiative is to establish a hiring program to onboard individuals within two weeks, two weeks of application, and be interviewed and onboarded. So if you know civil service, that's nothing short of a miracle, just saying. The Attorney General, Ann Lopez, joined thirteen other states in suing President Trump to invalidate his executive order which terminates birthright citizenship. So recently, a judge granted an injunction, a preliminary injunction against the executive order prohibiting it from moving forward for now. And then, so the other thing I have is that there are sheriff impersonators, and the Department of Law Enforcement is warning residents that these callers will call individuals, residents, and pose as deputy sheriffs, explaining that they are, there's a warrant out on them because they failed to appear in court. So the Department of Law Enforcement advises residents to never give out your credit card information or number of bank account information and other personal information to anyone claiming to be a representative of law enforcement agency. And then, Chair Hazama, I just wanted to, to bring up the question posed to me last time about the Governor's Executive and Legislative condo and property insurance task force. So I had a separate side conversation with Board Member Stephen Melendres, but just for the benefit of the board, I would just want to let you guys all know that this task force was concluded. And as background, it was established to examine the insurance market, implement short-term fixes, and recommend emergency changes for legislative proposals. This task force has concluded right, as I mentioned, and the recommendations are outlined in a white paper. And these recommendations are currently under consideration by the legislature and other decision-makers. With that, that's all I have, I'm here for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mel, any questions for the Governor's Office?
Yes. Go ahead. Chris Martin, thank you very much, Stephen Melendres here. Thank you for the discussion concerning the Governor's Task Force. I did get, I did get ahold of the white paper, thank you for that. I also spoke last Friday with Mr. Bumper. He's a new commissioner for, Insurance Commissioner, he replaced Commissioner Eto. And also we talking with him, and I am talking with legislators concerning commenting to and adding to the bill. The bills that they developed are good, and they support internally for Hawaii. What I had suggested to them, to the Director of Research, is to reach out to the insurance companies. And in my area, I'm a section head for procurement for the state. And what we do is we increase competition. By increasing competition, we bring down the pricing. So that's what we intend to do, talking with Mr. Bumper about putting out an RFI. They'd like you to go ahead to the insurance companies to see about increasing competition here, thereby lowering the prices. But thank you very much for your help, and the white paper was great. I am continuing to talk with the legislators on that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, anyone online? Hey, thank you, Mel. Okay, moving on to Office of Congressman Chase, is anyone online, is Nester online? Okay, we'll move on to Office of Mayor Rick Blandiardi, Carrie.
Good evening, Chair Hazama and members of the, hello, good evening and members of the Neighborhood Board of Milani Malka. Carrie Castle, Deputy Director with Budget and Fiscal Services, representing Mayor Blandiardi this evening. Perhaps you might have heard the highlight of the day. Mayor Blandiardi signed Bill Fifty-Two, which is aimed at making our roads safer for e-bike riders, actually for people other than e-bike riders. I know that many neighborhoods were complaining of, you know, the sort of no rules, if you will, when it came to, you know, the bike riders. So what this bill does, it was co-introduced by councilmembers Tyler Dos Santos Tam and Agi Toba. And what this bill does is it puts in some safety precautions. And so first and foremost, helmet requirements for all riders under the age of eighteen, and then guidelines to prevent reckless riding, so giving HPD clear enforcement authority. Those are some of the highlights. Presumably, you know, by putting this bill into action, again, it'll prevent some of the accidents that really have been very dangerous, not only for the bike riders, but also for the community. Additionally, since we will be on recess in March, I just wanted to share that Mayor Blandiardi will be submitting the city's budget to City Council at the end of this month. And during the second week of March budget, the various city departments will be presenting their budget briefings to the City Council members. Probably also of interest is the fact that, you know, every day we're learning about different things that are happening at the national level with President Trump. You know, whether it's shutting down one agency or another, but what the city is doing, we're in the midst of tracking, you know, how much federal funding the city obtains throughout the various agencies. These primarily are in Department of Transportation and also the Department of Community Services. So, you know, as we go to submit our budget to the City Council, we will evaluate. There's no way we can make up all the federal fundings, you know, should, should President stop funding. But at least we will start to track it and see what are our priorities and perhaps, you know, create some backstopage or prepare for, you know, at least some things that the city can do to offset any federal fundings that might be taken away. Lastly, I wanted to report on the concern from last month. This is regarding the bicycle shelter. And with respect to the bicycle shelter, so DTS is responsible for the shelter, and they reported that the bike shelter will be moved to the Middle Street Intermodal Center. So they want to be able to still, they don't want to just take it apart, they want to relocate it and have it used by, you know, people that perhaps come off the rail station and specifically at Middle Street. They're constructing a concrete pad in order to place the bicycle shelter on top of the concrete pad. So due to the fact that the rail is being constructed, where they planned to put the shelter and build the concrete pad has been barricaded. So unfortunately, DTS isn't, hasn't been able to get to the site to create the pad. They've indicated that by August twenty twenty-five is when, you know, the shelter should be relocated. And so unfortunately, I'm sorry to say, it's another, you know, six months before that will be relocated. In the meantime, DTS has reached out to the contractor to power wash it and make sure that it is cleaned out. That's all I have in my reports, so I'm here for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Carrie, any questions for the Mayor's Office this evening? Go ahead, Alice.
Carrie, I heard your report on the bike life thing, and I've been very concerned about that. Do you know, I mean, I'm glad part of it, I guess what happened is they have to wear helmets, and they can't be riding on the handlebars, and they can't be doing other funky things. But that's not the rest of the problem. The rest of the problem is, I don't know if it was eighteen or not, but I really am concerned about all these youngsters, three and four and five years old, that have these e-bikes. They don't have helmets, they don't, they aren't knowing anything about traffic rules or anything else. And do you know if anything else is going on in the ledge based on that problem?
I'm not sure about the legislature, perhaps, I don't know if the Governor's Office can speak to that. But Alice, in terms of the age, yes, helmets are required for all riders that are under eighteen years of, eighteen years old. You know, I think part of this is also a, unfortunately, it's also a parent parental issue. You know, that parents are buying these very fancy, expensive bikes and not realizing how, how dangerous, you know, they can be, because they are pretty powerful. So I think it's, it's a shared responsibility between parents and as well as government. So this is the first step that, that has been taken by the city in which to put some kind of enforcement in place with respect to e-bikes.
Any other questions for the Mayor's Office? Anyone online? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Carrie, I have two questions for you.
Yes.
The Board is, on behalf of the Board, I'd love to request an update provided by DTS in regards to the emergency access road for Milani Malka. I understand that DOT and DTS are supposedly working, or was working on this solution. So I don't know what the hangup is or what the estimated completion date of this road is, but I suspect that we're gonna need an update from both entities on the emergency access road, so take that back. The second thing is, for DPR, you know, our parks here don't have any lights. So what is the DPR policy on the closing time for parks without? Was our Malka Community Park, according to the signage, it closes at ten PM? So I'm like, okay, so none of our parks here have lights yet. I don't think Community Park was ever envisioned to have light. I know District Park was. So maybe you can check with DPR on what their policies, and we may have to change the, we may have to request from them to modify. to modify the operating times for the park.
Okay, Chair. Did I hear you correctly in saying that the parks never had lights in place?
Yeah, right now, they never had, I know the park plan doesn't have any for Community Park. I know in the park plan, there are lights, or there were lights planned for the District Park.
Okay.
But the lights are not in.
Okay.
So, you know, if they're not intending to be put in, then maybe we can also modify the operating hours for that part too. I just was wondering why you pick ten P M if there's no lights.
Okay, understood.
Okay. All right, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Council District Eight, Councilmember Okimoto.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair Tomashiro, members of the board, Jamie Chidov from Councilmember of Okimoto's office. Have a written report on the desk there. Council just wrapped the committee week last week. Finishing up with our one P M media public safe meeting. Or the confirmation hearings for the director designated Department of Customer Services, the medical examiner and the Director of Emergency Services Department. That nomination was deferred until a follow-up meeting. As a board previously discussed, Bill fifty-two is a stopgap measure to address e-bike riding permits and the safety issues. I believe, I wasn't sure if it was this board or the Mililani Board. There is a huge preemption clause on that, what the city can and cannot do. There are handful of measures going before the legislature right now. I'll defer to our state legislators to provide more details about that. They can regulate it on their own, or they can kick it to the counties and remove that preemption clause. Because the issue that we're seeing is necessarily with what is defined in the Oyri vice statutes. It's these higher powered e-bikes and for lack of a better term, e-dirt bikes or e-motocycles that have higher horsepower that are on our streets. And unfortunately, the city cannot regulate these higher powered e-bikes because we are preempted by state law. A council member continues to meet with the various department directors. We have not met with DTS yet. We meet with them tomorrow soon. We will bring up that emergency access road topic tomorrow morning. But other than that, I'll stand on the written report. Community has any questions, visit us at honolulucitycouncil.org, give us a call at seven six eight five zero zero eight. Or email dot okimoto@honolulucitycouncil.org.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Any questions for Councilmember Okimoto's office this evening? Anyone online? Okay, thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Council District Two, Councilmember Matt Wires Office, Amy.
Hello, Chair and members of the board, Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wires Office. Teresa, to address your thing earlier, if you want to go ahead and send that to me, I can go ahead and take a look into that. Thank you. Just a couple of things, I wanted to highlight council members honoring of Captain Clifford Kanekavaiola Chillingsworth at January's full council honorary certificate program. Captain Chillingsworth spent nearly thirty years on the North Shore as a city and county lifeguard. He was also a proud Korean War veteran. Couple of things regarding budget, council member is closely monitoring the potential federal funding changes and is working with the city administration to ensure the budget resilience. If you or anyone you know is experiencing impacts from the federal policy of funding changes, please feel free to reach out to our office. See, and then a couple neighborhood follow-ups, Teresa, this is mostly in your neighborhood. Yeah, lots of restriping going to be needed at the intersection of We coll and like Kalani, the crosswalk and the stop sign markings. The dedicated left turn lane into the bridge at Long Nani Valley as well. And then the no parking demarcations, basically all up and down of We coll street. Those were already submitted, so just waiting on the department to get that to us. And on the last page for legislative updates, Bill fifteen would provide financial relief for some local families regarding cesspool conversion. Currently, families with a total household income under one hundred thousand dollars would qualify for funding up to fifty thousand dollars. If you have any inputs or suggestions, please feel free to reach out to Councilmember's office. And we're anticipating this bill will be on February twenty-sixth, full council agenda. Also, Bill eighteen would reduce plastic waste by restricting the sales of single-use plastic bottles at city vending machines, or rather vending machines at city facilities. And this would also help to reduce what goes into our landfill. Bill sixty-one would establish a clear standard for HPD to identify and cite individuals performing wheelies on public streets. And we also anticipate this bill to be heard at February twenty-sixth council. For landfills, Councilmembers Resolution twenty-five zero zero three, which would reaffirm the existing council policy that solid waste landfills should not be located above drinking water sources, was adopted last month. Councilmember continues to be committed to stopping the current proposed landfill citing and will continue to monitor bills that are moving through the state legislature. And speaking of those bills, House Bill nine six nine would prohibit construction modification and expansion of landfills near or above aquifers. As well as Senate Bill four three eight, that any landfills are being cited over aquifers or on a I do have the information on the newsletters to track those as well. Anyone has any questions for Councilmembers Office that could take?
Any questions for Councilmember Wires Office? Anyone online? So Carrie, the
Yes.
Bill sixty-one were not contained in Bill fifty-two?
This is actually more wheelies, like so that way when HPD, when you're actually doing wheelies, it's easier to, for them to sight.
That wasn't
I'm, I'm not sure what Bill fifty-two Yeah.
Okay, but I'm just wondering, because you have two deals that really deal with the problem, right? So I don't know why introduce two different ones, they couldn't combine it into one or something. I was just wondering.
No, I, I believe, I'm sorry.
You know me back.
I, okay, no problem. Yeah, I believe on councilmembers bill is specifically for wheelies being performed, because I know HPD has a lot of time doing enforcement.
Okay. Both those are still alive.
On this one is yes, we anticipated being on next
What is right, they signed fifty-two?
Fifty-two was signed, so sixty-one is, like I said, hopefully on next week's.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. District seventeen, Senator De La Cruz, we have a representative online. Senator De La Cruz's office.
Yep, Senator De La Cruz, hello. Thank you, Chair, thank you, Chair and Board members, I'm Charles Miller from Senator De La Cruz's. I just want to update you guys on the twenty twenty-five session. Many bills have passed through the first committee and are now headed to the back. Twelve bills have been referred to Ways and Means Committee, which is chaired by Senator De La Cruz. S B two-two-two relating to fireworks allows illegal firework task force to continue their work. S B one-one-seven related station sets an age limit and helmet requirements for e-bikes. Also creates insurance requirements for electric motorcycles and promotes responsible use of e-bikes. The age restriction is fifteen years and it increases the helmet use age from sixteen to eighteen. Relating this, S B one-zero-four-four relating to stabilization of property insurance expands the Hawaii Property Insurance Association. HPIA and Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund, HHRF, to help condominium of who are unable to get insurance on the market. The bill also includes a loan program to assist condominiums in addressing deferred maintenance issues that contribute to rising premiums. And then the final one, S B three-two-seven relating to internships that expand the state's Haley A Mua internship to the private sector to give young people more better opportunities for experience in Hawaii's emerging industries. And then last week on Thursday, Senator De La Cruz attended art day at Mililani. Where he got to see the finale of this student show and author artwork in variety of art techniques. The students were fortunate lessons from artists Alice Dodge through the artist in the school program. The program incorporates traditional Polynesian art techniques into the curriculum. And Senator, you can see that all on Senator's Instagram at Senator Donovan De La Cruz. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Senator De La Cruz's office this evening? Anyone online? Okay, thank you, Charles. Okay, moving on to District thirty-eight, Representative Matsumoto.
Lauren, good evening. Good evening, Chair, members of the board and members of the public. So great to be with you today. So I have two handouts that I'll pass around later as well. I'll go through the first one, which is our, our Neighborhood Board Newsletter. So as you can see, you can go through this and just see a whole bunch of the different activities that we have done over the past month. I'm not going to go through every single one, but we've had many constituents come and visit through different things like the Secondary Student Conference, and we had the homeschoolers come and visit the Capitol. So you can take a look at all of that. I'm going to get to the important updates with the Mililani Emergency Road. Because I will apologize to DTS and DOT, my office has probably become slightly annoying with the amount of times we have called to get an update. But so this update is from DTS. So you can see there are two maps here, and then hopefully that DTS and DOT can come and give a presentation because they can do a much better job with answering the questions than I can. But the Department of Transportation and the Department of Transportation Services will begin grading a gravel road as outlined in this aerial plan. And so this is very different from the plan from, that I first showed you at the very beginning. So this does not go through the dog park anymore because they're looking to, yes, after all of that conversation about the dog park, we are not going through the dog park. We are going around and, and so the work at the ramp connection is going to take longer due to an embankment and drainage improvements. They're coordinating with the city and county for necessary permits and agreements, and they expect to start within the next month. So they said they expect to start in March. And in the, in the future, the city and county plans to create an express bus route through this area, which will then be paved. So right now, we're starting with the gravel road. And then this will be used as an express bus route and paved so only for the buses. And so they're going to keep you updated as we go through, but this is the current plan that my office has gotten. And so that's what I have for you with that. In the next few pages, there's a whole bunch of resources you can look at. But I did want to highlight, because I have two little ones, and I know this is such a big deal, but applying for the early childhood educator stipend. So the Office of Early Learning in the University of Hawaii offers a tuition stipend, stipend to current and potential early childhood educators and caregivers. So really looking to make sure that we are able to have wonderful, phenomenal early childhood educators. And so that's not for your children, but those who are going to be an early childhood educator. So I'm now going to go to my next handout, which we just got fifteen thousand of these in our office today, so you will be the first ones to see them. If you live in District thirty-eight, you'll be getting them. And so one of the big things I wanted to let you know is, as we do every year, we are doing our State Capitol Talk and Tour. It is on Thursday, March twentieth, from ten A M to twelve thirty P M. And this is during spring break. So parents can bring their children to go through the Capitol. It's been a wonderful event that we, last year we had over a hundred people that came. The lieutenant governor and the governor opened their offices, you get to go into the chambers. So please join us for our Capitol Talk and Tour. I also wanted to let everybody know, I know it's a few months out, but mark your calendars now. On April tenth, right here, we're going to be doing our legislative update, Town Hall. And the reason we do it in April is that's when a lot of the bills have already, all the bills have already crossed over from the House to the Senate and vice versa. And we are about to head into conference. And that's when I give my legislative update on the bills, because that's when we have a, a clearer idea of what are going to be the bills that seem to be kind of making it towards the finish line, so I can get the public's input. On the inside of this handout, you will see all of the bills that I introduced this year. And as always, I send out a survey to my district and get the responses back. And the, the bills that we put in were based on the responses back from the survey of what were the top issues that you feel are facing our community. And those issues were cost of living, housing, crime and safety, government reform and traffic. And then you'll see underneath, there's also constituent requests. We had people who filled out the survey that have specific bills that they'd want to put in. And so those bills are right there. Speaking of that survey, on the back, we have some of the survey results, but if you want the entire survey results, we have those online at repmatsumoto.com. So you can go there and click on information and our survey results fall underneath there. Of the bills that we have moving through the legislature still. We have House Bill HB fourteen forty-two relating to the Office of Entrepreneurship. So the idea behind this bill is really recognizing the challenges that entrepreneurs or small businesses have in our state. This is something that has gone over and done really well in Nevada. And something that I think would be very beneficial here in Hawaii. And so that bill is still moving through the legislature. It's going to finance. You've heard me talk about this bill many times. It almost made it to the finish line last year. But it's relating to the individual housing account program, so it's a pre-tax savings for a home for a down payment. So it's kind of like the Island Flex Plan where you can use pre-tax dollars to save up for that down payment. And it's a program that already exists, but currently it's capped at five thousand dollars per year. Which who can save up for a down payment with five thousand dollars per year? And so all this bill is doing is raising it for an individual to twenty thousand dollars a year that you can save pre-tax or forty thousand for an individual. And it caps it instead of at the twenty-five thousand dollar cap. It caps it up at two hundred thousand, which is about what a down payment is for a home now. And then the last bill, HB five-seven-two, which I have put in for ten years, and it's the first time it's actually gotten a hearing. And it actually passed out of committee, but it's eliminating the general excise tax on food and medical services. And so those necessities. Hawaii is one of the only states that, that still taxes our food and our medical services. And so this bill received forty-seven pieces of testimony and support and is headed on to finance. So those are the three bills that are still moving the legislature. And I'm sorry, that was a very long report, but that's what I have for you this evening. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Representative Matsumoto this evening? Yes. Go ahead, Stephen.
Lauren, thank you. You're so well organized. I love, I love the color. It works out great. I just want to say thank you very much for the referral back to we had last week with Sharon, with your staffer concerning the insurance crisis.
Yes.
And as I shared with Ms. Martin, I did, when I was able to get in contact with Mr. Buffer, who called me. He's the new insurance commissioner. And I'm working with him concerning an RFI to bring in more insurance companies in the state to reduce our costs. So thank you for your input and thank you for your help.
Absolutely. And I have to give you a shout out because we have been the task force, as you know, the governor's task force was meeting, we were trying to get updates. And we just learned that that task force is dissolved and they're not meeting anymore. And if it wasn't for you to continue asking about that, our office wouldn't have known because we've been waiting for updates as well. So thank you so much on your part. Reaching out to our office really helps move a lot of these things forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Lauren, I have two, so your
Okay.
Your HB twelve twenty-six e-bike bill is
Yeah, that's dead.
It's dead.
Unfortunately. So I never received a hearing, but the reason it didn't receive a hearing is there were a whole bunch of e-bike bills this year. So there's several e-bike bills that are still moving through the legislature. And actually, one of our caucus bills regarding e-bikes is there. But yes, unfortunately, that one did not receive a hearing.
Thank you for the update on the emergency road. Still have questions from DTS and DOT and how this
Yes.
All going to work.
And I'm sure they have answers.
And I'll be their number one pain in the Okay.
You can take my spot.
Yeah, I'll take your spot on that. All right, thank you, Lauren.
Thank you so much.
Okay, District forty-six, Representative Peruso, Amy, are you online?
I am.
Hey.
Good evening.
Go ahead, Amy.
Hi. So just a quick update. We are moving House Bill nine six nine, which will prohibit the sighting of a landfill over an aquifer. I know that's been of great concern to our all of our connected communities for this whole region. And I will also say that primary area focus for us has been the surprising shifts in the federal landscape. So thinking about the federal cuts to funding that we're anticipating, we're also having more conversations around what that will mean for our state in terms of the fiscal situation. So I I think that as we head into, we just passed first lateral and we're heading towards crossover. But that particular context has changed much of the conversation. So many of the aspirations that we had at the beginning of session for investments we would like to make, now I think we're going to be really working on you know, supporting people who have unexpectedly become unemployed. And then also, if there are cuts to critical social services, we're we're working on identifying what that might look like. Various departments and agencies are preparing kind of synopses or summaries and and really trying to get at the critical data that we need. But House leadership is really taking understanding the severity of the situation and talking about extending session so that not a formal extension will still adjourn in in early May. But then to be meeting every month for a week of that the last week of the month until the next session. Because we know that we're going to have to come back and and continue to do this work. So that's my update, and I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions for Representative Peruso's office? No, Representative Peruso? Nope. Anyone online? Okay, thank you, Amy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
District thirty-seven, Representative Lachica Trish, are you online?
Chair, can you see me?
Okay, go ahead.
Hi. Aloha, everyone. Good evening. Rep. Lachica here, District thirty-seven. So just a couple of dates. The Committee on Education, we also wrapped up our last round of hearings last Thursday. So for the House Committee on Education, one of our top priorities this year is really the expansion of a public pre-K. So this is part of Lieutenant Governor Luke's Ready Cakey Program, so expanding early childhood education to three-year, three and four-year-olds. We also so adding additional positions and funding and also enabling the development of childcare and preschool facilities. So I have a bill that would enable the School Facilities Authority to be able to expedite on those. And we also expanded public preschool open doors, which is completely state funded. So even with with all the uncertainty on federal funding, at least we know that, you know, our commitment for early education will be funded through preschool open doors and that the eligibility for that will also change. It will now, if that bill passes, it will go two-year-olds will also be eligible. Parents with two-year-olds, more families with higher with federal poverty, three hundred percent of the federal poverty level, basically more more access for more families. So there's a lot of things on that comprehensive bill. We still have school supports, different bills on student support. So one of the big things this year that's being talked about because of the cost of living is universal free school meals. So what kind of version passes out this year based on the budget and the capacity of the department is still something that is in negotiation. But I think we're all in agreement that, one, you know, hungry kids can't learn. And in committee, we just heard, we had hundreds and hundreds of testimony. We had dozens of kids and teachers that came and testified, and it was just very heartbreaking, the stories that they've had to share of being turned away at the lunch line. And the way that the rule, the federal rules are set up right now is that to for a student to be able to qualify for a free and reduced lunch is a family of four needs to be making forty-seven thousand dollars. So if you make more than forty-seven thousand dollars, then you can no longer qualify. And so you're 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 required to pay per meal. And so it's just something that we would like to see move this year. We still have student transportation. On the my my own bill package, there's still several bills moving. I do have an e-bike bill that's moving that's supported by the Department of Transportation. It's House Bill four three five. I will drop the link in the chat. But that one would amend the different classifications by speed. It would increase the minimum rider age to sixteen. It would require point of, this is something that's new, but it would require point of sale disclosure. So when parents are purchasing e-bikes, they kind of get a cop, you know, they get the statute and just letting them know that these are the state laws. And then there's some registrations required for certain classes. What else? We also have a red light camera bill. So once the pilot starts expanding, my bill targets the red light pro camera program to be implemented in school zones and for the fines collected in school zones to be deposited in the safe routes to school program. So that's also supported by the Department of Transportation. And what else would I like to highlight? I have most of my package is like relating to education. So those bills are also still moving forward. And then one final update from the last month is I was able to get an update from the Department of Education Office of Facilities. I was able to be joined by Chair Hazama in that meeting, providing an update on the Mililani Middle School MOU parking lot, which has been ongoing for two or more years. I don't know how long, maybe longer, Chair. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but so there's been multiple people working on this, but the current administrator right now for the administrate for the department has shared with us that there's, they met with the city Parks and Recreation, and right now there's three things that they still quite haven't determined. So one is deciding on the appropriate, I mean, the current use of the property, which includes the use of the trash and trash bins. I think there's agreement that DPR on the city side will be providing the trash bins for that. The second one is the administration of the online booking as well as the on the reservation side. What type of permitting and use forms will be required? Our understanding is that there will be two forms that will be required. So there's a park use permit on the city side and then a second use of facilities permit on the department side. The last is security. So I think that's the biggest one is there because it is Department DOE property and it is a locked gate. They quite can't, the city and the department, the state can't quite come into agreement on who will unlock the gate and whose responsibility that falls under and whether or not that would require a custodian, which will entail some fees. So those three things are things that they're still being worked on by the their appropriation council on the city side. So they're and the Attorney General on our side, and they will be meeting in three weeks to go over those. It's not, it's still, you know, it's it's there. We still won't know if they'll come into agreement in the three weeks, but we will get an update in the next month. And that it, that's it for my report. Chair, feel free to add if I missed anything, and I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Representative Lachica?
Chair. Chair, Stephen Mulanders here. Thank you for that report. And I'm curious, I asked to your bill on e-bikes. One thing that's not been mentioned in the bills that are currently gone through the system is the lithium ion battery dangers on the e-bikes. About six weeks ago, as you know, lithium lithium ion batteries are subject to thermo winery. And once they start doing that, there's actually no way to try to put them out. The Fire Department does what they do, they put a blanket over it, try to smother it. But six weeks ago, two months now, there is a e-bike that caught fire in a garage in Aia and burned a third of the house down. In your disclosures on your bill, are you asking for disclosures from the manufacturers or the or the reseller to put that disclosure into the person that's purchasing the e-bike?
Yeah, that could be something that could, that's a good suggestion and some that's possibly good feedback. Right now, currently this disclosure is right, is just on the point of sale on what is kind of like based on the state traffic code, but we can certainly take a look at that. I do have a separate lithium ion battery recycling bill, so that's House Bill three three two. That one's still alive, but it does expand our Hawaii's recycling program to include the proper disposal and recycling of lithium ion batteries, which includes those types of batteries. It's on the man, right now, my bill is on the manufacturer's side, which the manufacturers aren't too happy with. But there it's it's currently being being worked on, but it is, it does, it is, it is a bill that came out of actually are one of my constituents constituents who works in the city in the department because he has noticed the amount of fires. You know, because of the the, you know, the people just don't know how to properly dispose of the the batteries. Thank you. I can share those with you. So yeah, House Bill three three two for lithium ion and then four three five for the e-bikes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Trish, thanks for setting up that meeting with DOE. I guess I understand they're still, after all this time, have to work out these details. But you know, my my position on behalf of the community is that you know, the whoever uses the parking lot, whether it's a sports league or whatever, shouldn't have to pay to use that facility. Unfortunately, we got to work something out, you know, the the school and the city has to have to work something out in regards to how they can open and close that gate without incurring costs. You know, as much cost as possible. But you know, the the land belonged to the parks. It was deeded over to the state. So it was public land. It was deeded over to the state from the parks with the agreement that, you know, the park users would be able to use that parking lot. So, you know, and this was way before, you know, you were the representative or whatever, this was like three or four years, probably five years ago, when this whole idea was hatched. And I I think this board brought up at that time that, you know, fine, it's a great idea. How are you guys going to work this parking out? Parking lot usage deal out, you know, with everybody. And, you know, here we are today, they're still trying to work it out. Trying to figure it out. But you know, my my stance is I don't think the public or the park users should have to pay to use that that parking lot because it, you know, it was deeded over to DOE. And for DOE to now say, hey, you know, we have to charge you guys to use it or charge the park users, I think. I don't think that was the intent. That definitely was not the intent of the agreement to transfer the land over. So I think we got to work something out and hopefully you can stay on top of it and we'll help you, but it can didn't come to some kind of agreement where, you know, we don't have to charge the park users for that.
No, no. Thank you, Chair, for being there. Thanks for your continued push on this, too.
Okay, thank you, Trish. Moving on to Department of Transportation, Casey, off.
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so you can see my screen here. Good evening, Chair Hazama, members of Milani Moka, Launani Valley Neighborhood Board, Casey Albert from the State DOT Highways Division. During my field inspection last week, I'm glad to report our landscape contractor completed the cutting of the overgrowth on both sides of H two freeway from the Kipapa Stream by the up to the Milani Interchange. But I noticed that we still need to cut back the overgrowth from the Pineapple Road overpass to the start of the Kipapa Stream. Right up. So I work with our district office to have our landscaping contractor or landscaping crew cut back the overgrowth. I'm also notice some trees on both sides of H two freeway from Milani Interchange to the Leila Hua Gulf Coast Road overpass needs to be trimmed and cut back as it's it's intruding into the paved shoulder and blocking somewhere existing signs. So I will work with our district maintenance crew to adjust this concern. At last month's meeting, I mentioned graffiti artist was at work and glad to report our maintenance crew managed to remove most of the graffiti from the destination sign. But unfortunately, I noticed the graffiti artist is still out there. Work with our maintenance crew on adjusting the graffiti artist's latest work. And finally, as Representative Matsumoto mentioned about the emergency road, I'm glad she reached out to our administration because when I reached out to administration, they told me that the contract with CD and the City DTS Administration. I guess the city council is currently reviewing the memorandum of agreement between the City DTS and the State DOT. And that the city is also working on obtaining the permits to construct the emergency road. The emergency exit from Montezai is broken down into two phases as Representative Matsumoto mentioned. The first phase will be constructing of the exit as a gravel road. And phase two, the city would obtain fundings to pave the gravel road so heavy vehicles like buses can use the route. And so starting the construction next month, I'm glad Representative Matsumoto mentioned that because when I asked my administration, they could not give me an answer. But yeah, that's, this concludes my report. I can take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Casey. Any questions from for the DOT? Hey, Casey, yeah, thanks for giving us the update and if you can keep us updated. I I do have a question, though, since since the emergency access road we built in phase one by DOT.
Yes.
Who maintains, who maintains access for that gate?
That's where the MOE is supposed to clarify everything, and that's what the they're working on. But I can clarify, I can ask my administration, but I'm understanding all that information is supposed to be in the MOE that has to be signed between the two agencies.
Yeah, because we got to figure this out. The coordination has to be there because during an emergency, one of the agencies has to take the lead on it and actually open the gate for us. So we need to identify and know what that agency is. Is it is it the state in which case DOT may defer to Haime? If it's the city, then I have no idea who they're going to defer to, maybe HPD. But we got to, we got to understand this for phase one. I understand phase two is a follow-on phase, which the city will then attempt to get funding to complete that or pave the road over. But once they build the phase one thing, I, we need to know who who has custody of that gate so we can make sure that that particular agency is contacted to either open or close the gate for us.
Sure, I'll follow up on that.
Okay.
Chair.
Yes. No, go ahead.
Let's do it on with that. Also maintaining the property surrounding it. We already know how quickly the grass grows. If we can't get to the road and the gate, kind of defeats the purpose of having it. So that's making sure that there is an actual written plan of action of how often it will be maintained, mowed, whatever it is, so that it is the road itself isn't overgrown from that area.
You want like the roadside landscaping, that's what we're doing all the time, yes.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for DOT? All right, thank you, Casey.
Sure.
I see that ISF is here, so you have an update for us this evening before we go on.
Aloha, I do have a written statement, so I'm going to read it. It's it's not very long. So aloha, my name is Sherry Nakamura, and I'm the community liaison for the Hawaii School Facilities Authority. And I'm the community liaison for the Hawaii School Facilities Authority. So the legislature proposed Mililani High School as one of the sites for the teacher workforce housing project on state property. And HISFA chose Mililani as a pilot site in 2023 to meet the critical need for workforce housing and to support teacher recruitment and retention in our state. Since last September, HISFA has conducted and attended approximately twelve community meetings, including this neighborhood board meeting. The purpose of these meetings was to share our proposed project site, answer questions and gather community feedback. Many in the community, including the school's teachers and students, expressed their concerns about the impact the teacher workforce housing on the initially proposed site on the upper campus would have on their programs. As a result of these meetings and community feedback, HISFA and the developer, Pacific Housing Assistance Corporation, looked into moving the project to another location. The proposed alternative site on Milani High School's lower campus received positive feedback in the December meetings and during the feedback period in January. And thank you for those who participated in providing input. I'm pleased to share that based on the feedback, on that feedback, we have finalized the location for the project to be at the alternative site on the Mililani High School lower campus adjacent to the athletic facilities. The new site does not impact any current structures or academic programs that would need to be relocated or disrupted. We recognize there may be concerns about displacing parking, especially for students. So HISFA is proposing additional parking near the athletic fields and upgraded walkways. There are many more steps before we start construction. We recognize there are some some many unanswered questions that we will explore through our structured processes, including environmental assessments and community meetings. We would like to thank all of those who have taken the time to attend our community meetings and neighborhood board chairs for your, their support in moving the conversation forward. Our plan is to continue to update the community periodically through neighborhood board meetings, this Milani High School Community Council meetings and on our website. And I'm here to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you, Sherry. Any questions for HISFA?
Are you, I, I know you guys are in agreement to separate this project from school facilities or infrastructure, right?
Yes.
So they can't share parking. When I say share parking, like, I, I understand the school students need parking when school starts, but anytime after that, the parking available, right?
I'm not sure, but I will make sure that that feedback and that question is asked because I, I know what you're saying. Yeah.
I mean, you know, like the condos and stuff, they say you have to be out of the parking lot by a certain time. The school will come in and use the parking. May I just hit the, spend money, taxpayer dollars and stuff and have to, you know, build two parking things when one parking lot is not being used most of the time, so.
Yeah, no, I think that condominiums do that. They partition off and have either a special section or, yeah, because I think maybe one of the concerns is the safety issues or how to, how to keep the project separate from the school. So, but that's certainly some.
Yeah, during, during school hours or when students are on campus, I, I understand that. But I guess at night, the school slows down and nobody's there. The residents are going to be the only ones in that vicinity anyway, so.
I'll bring that feedback back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, Chair. Thank you very much for that narrative. Appreciate that. Chair Zama brought up a good point. In that, in the contract with the contractor, I know it's a wraparound, but is the DOE retaining the property? Or I can't see the contractor buying the property. Is, is the DOE leasing the property?
The state, the state, the state will be leasing the property.
Okay, state maintains ownership. So then what Chair Hazama said makes good sense. Is that parking then could be available to the community? Because the state owns the property. Right?
The state will lease the property to the.
Yeah, that's right. But they still own it. That's correct. Thank you.
Chair, if I can clarify, when she says state, it's state, but it doesn't mean it's DOE. So I don't think DOE is maintaining the affordable housing site. It's a separate department who is going to receive that portion of the land and if they're going to have it, it's going to change hands. So DOE does not have access to that. It becomes another state department who is then going to lease the contract over to the property managing agent. So it's two different state departments. It's not the DOE maintaining that site.
Yeah. But it stays within the state's jurisdiction, but it's not the same. Not the same agents.
Right.
And that's why, you know, they wanted that separation between the, the school and the project. But it's just some ways to converge and stuff, maybe.
Right.
For the benefit of both. School, the taxpayers and the people that live at that project, yeah.
Thank you, Sherry.
Okay, thank you. Aloha.
Okay, moving on to board minutes, our January twenty first, twenty twenty five board minutes. There any corrections or any comments regarding the board minutes? Hearing none, any objections to adopting the board minutes? Hearing no objections and abstentions?
Hearing no abstentions to the board minutes for January twenty first, twenty twenty five have been adopted. Moving on to reports. Patsy T. League Central Oahu Regional Park.
No report.
Report, moving on to committees, education, Anna.
I do. So thank you so much for the principals that submit information about their schools. Milani Ike, they are concerned. They're reaching out to the community to drivers who passed the school on the Haola Parkway to slow down and drive with precaution as they approached the new crosswalk used by the children before and after school. They also announced that on Valentine's Day, the Milani Complex Schools have worked together to create handmade Valentine cards for the clients of the Institute of Human Services. And they hope that the cards brought smiles to everyone who received them. On National History Day, Milani Ike proudly presented their project at the district's fair on February eighth. And this, these projects will advance to the state fair in April. And Milani Maoka Elementary School, where we're here right now. The principal expressed a thanks to the parents and guardians for keeping the Makaikai Street clear of tra- traffic prior to the end of the school. This effort helps the neighborhood residents and tangible proof that we can work together cooperatively to make things better for the children in the community. The Wheeler Middle School is one of the twelfth Oahu Public Schools have been recognized for creating a warm and welcoming and safe environment for incoming military dependents and transitioning students enrolled at their campuses. Hawaii has approximately twelve thousand military dependent students or seven percent of the total student enrollment. Military families often encounter challenges due to the frequent relocations during their services. Each school was awarded with the Purple Star Norbert Hawaii Award by the Joint Venture Education Forum. Partnership between the Hawaii Military Community and the Hawaii Department of Education and other community organizations. And last of all, Lelehua High School is having an ACT testing day on February twenty fifth. And this is administered to students enrolled in eleventh grade. And finally, Lelehua Centennial Gala will be held on April first and the cost will be a hundred dollars per person. And this, these sales will profit the benefit, will benefit the Lelehua culinary program and the high school. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Anna. Stephen.
Thank you. Go ahead and share. Thank you. I'm going to be presenting the education committee report for Milani Middle School. As you can tell from the top there, that, that's our administration. Left hand side is Principal Thomas Shero and Assistant Principal Nakasone Horstman, Orvata, Han and Pang. Great staff, great staff. What we're highlighting today, if you scoot down, please. Sharing, highlighting this evening is the high interest programs. There's thirty-three high interest programs and they're free. They're great for enriching relationships, academics, and having the students together with similar interests. It was so cute. I was really, they're, they're very inventive, very creative. They have a top ten, they have an animals club, a band, they have thirty-three total programs. Yes, it's the animals band, model building, Disney Fanatics, Hula Club and Japan Study Club, which is also had students come here from Japan. It's great. So I would encourage the students, if they'd like to, with the parents to approval, to attend the high interest programs. When I was on the board for the school, they were the PT SO board. I was fundraising chair and we ensured that all these programs are free. And there are, that's, I'm so proud of the teachers there donate their times, their time. And then the ones that have the after school classes have a, the PT SO donates a lump sum. And each teacher has a stipend. They can draw from it anytime to provide for materials for each of their high interest program classes. So it's a tremendous opportunity. I would encourage students to take advantage of it. Go to the next page. Top left corner, community meetings. The schedule is every second Tuesday of the month, administration conference room. The parent, teacher, student organization meets at five PM. Right afterwards, the SEC, the School Community Council meets at six. And this last meeting, they discussed their, their science, technology, engineering and math open house that they had. They had it over thirty and they combined them with people that, with the community and also with Milani High School had a great, great. A lot of people there is just standing room only. It's a great result. And then on the right hand side, we're highlighting about the library. The read me, to read me and log reading progress. It's interesting that they use the term I have in there instant recs. It's actually instant recess. You see, sometimes the children on campus, the students, they'll have a book. So when they get a moment, they stop and they read. And that's great. I shared last time that when a student reads twenty minutes a day, you'll be exposed to another one point eight million words per year. And if they only read five minutes a day, be exposed to two hundred eighty-two thousand words a year. And even just one minute a day, exposed to eight thousand words a year. At this rate, what this equates to on the standardized test, the student that reads twenty minutes a day, they typically score in the top ninety percentile of the standardized test. The one that just reads five minutes a day, fifty percent percentile. And even one minute a day, ten percent percentile. So reading works. It's just tremendous. And the library there is, is great. As we scoot down, we have the school calendar. And on the school calendar coming up in March is the end of third quarter on March fourteenth. And then we have spring break, yay, March seventeen to twenty-one. And then Principal Yode on the twenty-sixth. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Military Civil Defense. Parks and Recreation.
No report.
The Zone is not here. Transportation has no report. Alice, you have breaking service at Ford. No report. Okay, moving on to announcements. Again, the Milani Maoka Launani Valley thirty-five will be in recess in March. Our next meeting will be held on April fifteenth, seven PM here at Milani Maoka Elementary School in Viawex. And also deadline for neighborhood board voter and candidate registration is this Friday, February twenty first. If you have any questions, please call the NCO office. Other than that, does anyone else have any other announcements this evening? Okay, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.